On Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty four, in the Ocean Shores Library on Point Brown Avenue here in Ocean Shores. We can do a roll call, the commissioners, Commissioner Barr.
Here.
Commissioner Bricker.
Here.
Mr. Ward.
Here.
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. Lawless. Here. Commissioner Bees is not here today. He, uh, he let me know that he had a medical issue to take care of. So if I could get a motion for an excused absence for Commissioner Bees.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Approved. Okay. Approval of. Meeting. Minutes. We can get a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on October twenty second. You have a motion? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ruth, thank you. Oh, um, I missed the agenda. Approval of the meeting agenda. And I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Option.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So approved. Public communication. Well, anyone in the house have, yeah.
Or. Uh, we, we approved something just before the agenda. What was it?
The minutes.
Minutes.
I got it. I got out of, uh, out of order there, Thorn, sorry.
That short head is deficient.
Yeah, there you go. Any comments? Yes. Anybody?
Last week, the Blue Zones did a path around the city sixteen miles. Is that the official planning commission recommendation?
Well, that is the, that is the path that has been approved. Um, there are. Uh, wires that are out.
Yeah.
And available and any additional copies while we're talking about it are available at the library. So yeah, there was some discussion about the route. Um, and the mayor rode the route. And then approved it as is. Now, while we're on the topic. Um, the signage that goes with that. Uh, won't be available for. Maybe up to a year. Uh, Blue Zones has commissioned, uh, a company out of Snohomis. To put all the signage together and she is working on it, but it is not ready yet. Uh, and she expects it'll be. About a year before those are posted here in Ocean Shores.
Okay, they mentioned they put a bike racks. Do you know where they put them?
Right now, the maintenance bike rack has been installed at the convention center.
Convention center.
So if you look at the convention center.
There already was one there.
Yeah, it's on the left-hand side, right near the front door on the left-hand side.
Right.
Yeah. Now the.
But that's not new.
No, well, it is actually.
It is?
Yeah, we just had the ribbon cutting ceremony on the thirtieth. For that officially. Now, Blue Zones is going to provide one or two. Bike racks around town at their cost. And then we're going to go out for a grant to match whatever bike rack they have. I don't know that that's been placed yet.
Okay.
Uh, but they're coming.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I don't know how many we're gonna go out by grant to get either, so the, the process continues. You know, there was some issue with the. Maintenance bike rack because we had had a lot of meetings and decided there was no need for any power. So George had decided he was gonna put it in one spot. Well, the one that showed up had power requirements.
Oh, correct, I see.
Yeah, yeah, right? So they'd obviously sent the wrong one. So Blue Zones had to go back, take the one with the power that we didn't want. And, and get the one that we did want and it's, it's in place now. So, yeah, so there's, nothing's easy, right? It's all complicated. So we're on the move forward, we hope, yeah. Anything else? Okay, cool. Any comments from afar?
Hi, Mark. It's Vida. I don't have any. Hi. I don't have any comments at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jane, anything?
No, just good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Have you adopted out the puppy yet?
Um, actually, we are up to three now that are up for adoption, so, uh, we could really use some foster homes and adoptees there. We're getting kind of, uh, full down there at the kennel.
There you go. See, you did have something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for letting me talk about that.
Little, little, little prod there. You're welcome. Okay. So with old business marketing theme Ocean Shores. I contacted again, uh, Jason Miersman, uh, who, uh, was with the group here that provided us with. Uh, some input on the business organization's plan for marketing of Ocean Shores. And they have, uh. They're working through, the mayor would like a meeting with them. And so we're working on that. I spoke to him again this morning and their next meeting is on the twenty-sixth, at two o'clock. Uh, reportedly, the mayor has been invited to that. I don't know that because I don't have visibility to the mayor's schedule. But hopefully he'll be able to attend and I will try to do so as well. So we can get moving on. What they're doing with our LTAC money.
Has their website launched yet?
I don't think it's, uh, the soft opening. Um, and I understand that's caused some consternation. And I'll leave it at that. Um. Some parts of it are really good. Other parts, um. Are. Questionable evidently in only, I don't wanna say clear, okay, question. So it appears they're not only marketing Ocean Shores businesses. Right? And the question is, if you're using LTAC money, why are you marketing non-Ocean shores businesses? That's a sticky point that needs to be addressed. And so there we are.
So those, these are businesses outside the town limits?
Evidently. I haven't seen them. I've only been told about them. So I haven't eyeballed it myself, but I'm told that that's, that's a problem. So, and I can understand why that would be a problem. So, uh, we, we need to have a discussion. To see. Where and why that's happening. Any other comments on marketing? In Ocean Shore? And the mayor did wanna have a town hall, but he wanted to have a meeting. With this group before calling a town hall. So I'm hoping, and he is in, uh, in hopes that we still have that. Uh, after this meet, after a meeting with it. Okay, metal siding. Now, if. If you haven't already heard, Commissioner Berry has resigned. From the planning commission. Now, he sent some information, uh, from our last meeting that he wanted to make some changes. He. He, uh, referenced some changes he'd like to make. Um, to roofing materials and metal siding in residential zones. I sent you all a copy because. I was, like I was saying earlier, I'm having problems with my printer instead of printing them out and bringing them. I just sent them off. Um, and Marshall, I just sent you a copy. Uh, in, in the email, uh, to, so you could review that as well. Um. Do any of the commissioners have any thoughts on the changes that were proposed by former Commissioner Berry?
I, from what I can see on it, the changes he's suggesting are exactly what we did discuss.
Yeah.
At the last meeting. I don't see anything. Out of line from what that is, basically just clearing it up and making it. Not so specific. Shoe horns us into something. So I.
And I know Marshall, we haven't had a chance to really look at it. Um, but this is really to help you.
Yep.
So, um. I'm really interested in what you have. In terms of thoughts.
Yeah, my, my primary interest is just to make sure it's not ambiguous and difficult to enforce.
Now, is this something that we'll need to take the council to change?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would expect.
All right.
Yeah, because the, the language that's in there is specific to the code and that's where, you know, some of the hangups have been. So if we're gonna change that, it has to be gone.
Would you be willing to work with me to, uh?
Sure.
On the wording so we can get that put together and, and sent forward? Superb. Okay. Anything else?
No, I think that's, that's pretty much what we had discussed.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. I think it cleans it up a lot.
Which was the goal.
Which was the goal.
Right. So. Okay, if nothing else, then the next item was political science. Uh, Dan? You were looking at this. I know you've been busy, so.
Yeah, I did some more research, but I haven't put anything in paper. Uh, yeah, but I do believe that when Attie, way when Attie, um, attacks their sign code makes a lot of sense. Um, I wouldn't go the extent that they go through at the end. I think it can be done a lot easier and more understandable. And I did look at Oak Harbor. Um, and. I, yeah, they have a nice chart that says how long signs can be up and all that, but, um. They say for temporary signs, you don't have to have, uh, a permit. But then they say, uh, like your type B sign, uh, you can have it up for a year. Okay, how do you know it's up for a year?
Who's monitoring that?
Yeah, who's gonna monitor that? So then, y- you know, we have to decide, I, I guess. Um, I'm looking for a little direction. How restricted do we wanna be? You know, I was thinking about, um. We can't single out, uh, political songs, but, uh, they're easily combined with real estate songs because they're the same height.
Right.
But do we really wanna, um. Like if a, a, a person doesn't win the primary. Do we wanna spill out that the sign asked for removed? Or do we really care and they have to remove it at the end of the, when it's finalized? They don't get taken away anyways and it's a hard thing for code enforcement to do, so I'm not sure why we would put that in the code.
I think we have a period in there now. Was it seven or ten days?
Seven, but I think the ma- majority will, or ten.
Yeah.
So. Uh, I guess with that, I could start, uh, working on it. Um.
I know I was out of town on election day and I was surprised when I came back at the lack of, I mean.
Lot of them down.
Lack of signs that I saw. I expected to see the full, full range of signs and I was pleasantly surprised that whoever had put them up or someone had taken them down.
Yeah, a- and we didn't have that the previous election. I mean, they came down quick. But I thought the real interesting one was, I shouldn't probably say this, but. Our council member, they had the big sign up on us.
Correct.
That person wasn't even opposed.
Ah.
So what was the purpose of the sign?
Right, I did see that particular sign, uh, throughout the county though.
Oh, it's still there?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I did see that same sign.
But I had to, I had to laugh when I said.
I got you.
Got my ballot on, maybe.
Yeah.
Assignments on that property.
Yes, that's.
There is. So, I, I think I'll tackle it because they do it groups. And we actually have nice groups too. But what we have to do is put a lot of the, um. Things people have to do or can't do in the beginning. And then list it, and then, so I'll tackle that and I'll try to.
If we're able to make it somewhat clear for the upcoming candidates. And for the community, I think that's the goal.
Yeah, and, and. I don't think we have to put in there, um. Specifically for political signs, when they can go up. Because what candidate's gonna put a sign up before they actually apply for?
Right.
And, so. I, I, a lot of them were real confusing and a lot of, there was a couple that were so loosey-goosey. I don't know how you enforce anything.
Well, enforcing it is always, is always the tough, tough part of it. You're right.
So I'll try and have something by the next meeting.
Super.
You tend to have a service life which kind of takes care of itself.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, one, I think I heard the mayor, what you said, the mayor does not want him on.
Right away.
Right away. Okay.
Yeah, so that would be something, we still have to get that through council, but that was the request.
Most jurisdictions, um, say you can't.
Right. So that'll be, that'll be one element I think that we can.
Yeah.
We can use. Yeah, Thorn.
We have a lot of enforcement problems with signs, obviously, around here. Not just political signs, but. One of the most common ones is honestly real estate signs, which are often placed on the right away. And are often, often exceed the maximum, uh, area. Which is four square feet. Mostly out-of-town companies have six square foot signs. I. I don't think that our sign enforcement guy is doing everything he can because he's so busy anyway, but. What he tells me is that he enforces when he gets a complaint about them and I guess that's okay. But it might be a little easier on him if we were to make these things uniform. If anything else. I mean, if real estate and political signs tend to be temporary, the same kind of thing, then at least make them the same.
Right, and there's, we're not supposed to differentiate between political signs and any other signs. So that would, that would work right, right in our wheelhouse, so.
And that's where the, when Attie does type of signs, they have, they have six types. I don't think we need all six, but. Um, and then they just say type one and then they, they say, um, uh. Temporary signs are typical associated, but not limited to advertising, real estate, political signs, event announcements. And I think that's, versus we, we spill them out, but I went through this type one, type two.
Right, just temporary signs.
Yeah, so.
We also have to write show signs that are placed on them.
Yes. Yes.
I would avoid that, honestly.
Well, the other question I was gonna ask is, pretty frequently coming into town in the right of way. You see all the signs that are posted for an event coming up or whatever and they're all down that area.
They are in the median.
They are. It's not supposed to be there either, so.
Who controls those?
Isn't that change?
I think the city does, actually.
I think the city does too.
They, they do. I believe George.
So it's like we're violating of our own stuff by doing it.
Designated posts or something.
Yeah, I think they do.
So we might have to talk about something in the median area of the downtown corridor or something, right? I, I mean, I don't know, but I think about that every time. I think.
Yeah, the right of way versus the median, but still, it's, yeah.
And it's a mowing strip, I mean, it's a mow strip, so, so either way.
So how do you, how, how do you stop people from doing, say, political signs? In the mow area if the city puts.
Exactly. So we might have to differentiate something about the downtown corridor area.
Yeah. Yeah, make an exception there for events, community events.
And maybe those, maybe those are permitted. I mean, I don't know.
Those posts are permitted down there.
Permitted or permanent?
Permanent, yeah. You're sort of downtowning them.
Those posts are always, and they just screw in on new sites.
Got it. But sometimes there's ones that are just staked up out there.
Yeah, I don't know about those.
For different events that come in, you can see they should come in and they're just.
So, that, that would be a good differentiation.
Yeah, I think so too.
Um, because otherwise it's, it's gonna get my technical word of whackadoodle.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you could say that they're not allowed in the media, except as posted by the city for.
Right, in the downtown corridor.
That'd be a way to get around it. Yeah, in, in the corridor specifically.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Because that's really the only place they have.
It is, it's the only place they have.
With that exception. Okay, anything else? Okay. Um, weed burners is next. Um, I spoke with the fire chief on this because there were a couple of schools of thought. Outright banning those. Banning them during burn bans. Or doing nothing. Right now, there is nothing in the code. And so. I had a discussion with the fire chief and he's kind of changed his mind. Where he was leaning towards an outright ban. He now would like to see a ban during burn ban times. So I will be working with him to draft that up, to get it into the code.
Yeah.
So, any thoughts on that?
I think it's reasonable.
I mean, during, it's an open flame during a burn ban. It kind of makes sense.
Makes sense.
Okay, the next item is the planning commission handbook. Um. So I know I've been working through pages one through twenty-one. And I've also made a note to pick up on where. Uh, Steve Berry had eighty to one oh three. And I haven't started that one yet. So I don't know if, uh, anyone else has had an opportunity. I did get some feedback from Tom Bees. He has gone through fifty-one to sixty-seven and he found nothing. Um, that it's, it's current. He didn't find anything to update.
I'm reviewing the episode part and the only thing I want to do, and so I wanna look at the American Planning Association to see what's their most recent, because they're. The last one was from like two thousand four, I think, to make sure if they haven't added anything to theirs.
Most current, yeah. That's the goal, is to get us to be most current.
I give mine four, four through one sixteen, but mostly a recitation of other, of fixed codes. Recompliments.
Okay. So we are making a little bit of progress there. Anything else? Um. See. A couple of the special notes. Um, been asked to look at again. Um. Membrane structures. Um. The mayor would like to use. The, um. The provision, the membrane structures that says, I've got it here. Yeah, in section thirty-one oh three temporary structures. Uh, under general. The provisions shall apply to structures erected for a period of less than a hundred and eighty days. Temporary structures, tents, umbrella structures and other membrane structures erected for a period of less than a hundred and eighty days. Shall also comply with the international fire code. Temporary structures enacted are erected for a longer period of time and public occupancy. Temporary structures shall comply with applicable sections of this code. The exception there is public occupancy temporary structures. Uh, complying with section three one oh three point one one shall be permitted to remain in service. For a hundred and eighty days or more, but not more than one year where approved by the building official. He would like to do the hundred and eighty days or more and then have inspections. Uh, there's been meetings with the owner. Um, they're gonna put power in. One of the other concerns was. People had expressed that they don't like the view. So there is a discussion in which to put bushes there to, to screen it. Um, but I wanted to, um, to bring that up to see, uh, what the planning commission thought about that concept. Obviously, if we would agree with that. Then we'd have to go to council to see if we could get them to approve that. For greater with one hundred and eighty days with inspections and the improvements that they're willing to make. Thoughts, please?
Okay. Hundred and eighty days after a hundred and eighty days is considered a permanent structure. And that structure does not meet the building code. So if it doesn't meet the building code, would you inspect it? I, I am totally against it. Totally against it.
I have to agree with Dan. I mean, I just don't think it's something that we want for the look or feel of Ocean Shores. I mean. To me, nothing says like I'm invested than a temporary structure. And, and I look at the other folks that have played by the rules. They have built their structures to code. And how fair is that to them? They've invested heavily in making those happen and. I, I know we've gone around and around and around and around about this, but. I just don't think it's something that for the future of Ocean Shores we want and it sets a precedent for anybody else now to start doing this. And I have to say, I drive past it literally every night on my way home and most of the time in the, after summer, nobody's there. So what's the purpose of having a vacant place out there? With nobody in it?
I guess I agree with the, um. Issue with the aesthetics. Um, it, it does have a. Some temporary feel about it. I don't want to, it, it's not temporary anymore.
Yeah, and it was, it was created during the pandemic.
Yes, yeah.
Well, the first time this came to the planning commission, most of the people had worked on the comp form. We didn't even realize it didn't have that, had to be building codes. We just said aesthetically, no. This is not what we's division Ocean Shore.
Yeah.
Yeah, Marshall?
Um, if, if for some reason you guys just forward, there is provisions in the code for, uh, event type tents. And it's the only place in, in the planning section of the code, title seventeen, where, um. Where the council has the authority to grant up to a thirty-day period for, you know, like a revival tent or a carnival tent or circus tent, that kind of thing.
Sure, but there's also provision in there, I believe, for special events.
Yeah, so, so we just need to make sure that if there's any changes where we're gonna start authorizing. Tent-type structures, that we address that section of the code as well, so that we don't have a conflict.
Absolutely.
And that, um. That time limit is, is fixed.
Fixed by code, authorized by council only.
Okay, so you.
At this point.
You could reapply. After the expiration date?
Um, I suppose. I, I, there's nothing in there that prohibits that.
And then it would have to go before the council.
Correct.
Extend it, yeah. Yeah.
Kind of like the vampire building coach keeps coming back.
It does. You know, when, when I'm talking to the mayor, it, it keeps coming up, so hence I do diligence. I bring it up.
Somebody's advocating for it. They don't want anybody, if it is.
Well, there, there are some, you know, extenuating circumstances that keep being brought up. Well, one, obviously. Um, they're not sure if they lose that, they'll be able to stay in business. I can neither verify or not verify that because I haven't looked at their books, none of my business. The other thing is there, um. There is, uh. Reportedly five jobs on the line. If that goes away, five people lose their job, which is a concern. Um, I can neither again confirm nor deny. Uh, that is just what I've been informed. So, yeah. Well, I appreciate your, your, your input and, uh. I will take that forward. We did, as we talked earlier, we had the ribbon cutting on the thirtieth of October for the recreation loop. More to follow on that. Um, we had one, um, interview for the planning commission and we'll be trying to set up others. Um, for. Those that have their terms ending on the second of January. Okay, any other commission member have a report?
Well, the report I have is it's gonna get windy tonight.
Yes, there is that wind advisory, yes.
Batten down your hatches.
Starts, what, four o'clock tonight through four in the morning. Um.
This direction?
Southwest up to fifty-five miles and. Southwest of two fifty-five miles an hour is what I.
Looked at it since sixty-one.
Sixty-one, so. It's been updated, okay. Um, any public communications, gentlemen? Any thoughts, comments, concerns? Well, okay, maybe a lot of concerns, but, all right. Good enough, okay. Any, uh, public comments from afar, please? Vida?
Hi, Mark. No, no comment. Thank you.
Hey, good to hear from you. Jane, any thoughts?
No, just thank you again for letting me bring up the kennel. Um, it, it's a important part of our community, and it is starting to get overloaded as with all the shelters and everything around here. So once again, I appreciate that, and hope you'll have a wonderful afternoon and don't blow away.
Yeah, thanks, Jane. Okay, um, our future meeting date, um, there'll be no meeting on the, uh, November twenty-sixth, that Tuesday before Thanksgiving. But that would be an opportunity for you not to have that interfering with your Thanksgiving holiday. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, December tenth, two P M. here in the Ocean Shores Library. Uh, the secretary for that meeting will be Tom B's. He's not here, so I'll communicate with him about that. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mm-hmm.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, we are adjourned at two thirty-one.